Five thirty on call, it's council meeting to order. First thing we'll do is lead the pledge, I'll take care of that. All stand please. And just for information, in the pledge of allegiance, one nation under God does not have a comment there. It is one nation under God, is what it says. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice of all, honest and fair. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Professor Ed did first. Does anybody need to introduce you?
Thank you mayor. Would you bow your hearts with me? Father in heaven, thank you for the city of champions. Thank you for this council that gives themselves to make sure that the next generation can carry the torch of this great place. We ask for your wisdom to lead this city. We cannot do it without you. We ask you to give Jason King wisdom. We ask you lord for his team with Darren and Steve and Rob and Nick and all those that are making decisions on the daily, that you would lead, guide and direct them. We pray for Chief Harris, we pray for Chief Isbell, that you would give them wisdom and honor as they make hard decisions in our community every day. Well, we pray for the generations that call this place home and the kids. Well, we pray this to be a place of safety, but also a place that would challenge them to know that their lives have purpose and a destiny. And let this city be a place that whether they come back and make this home or they go and live somewhere else, that they would always be proud to say Stevensville, Texas is my home. Well, we ask your blessing on this place and on this meeting. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Next time we have a general discussion, citizens and citizens, and I do have one Kimberly. You have three minutes, there'll be a clock up here on top. You'll give your name and address so for the record?
Yes sir. My name is Kimberly Middleton. I live at one zero zero eight West McNeil Street here in Stevensville, Texas. And am I ready to begin?
Yes ma'am.
Good evening Mayor Sveen, Counselor Thomas, City Manager King and councilmen and women. I'm so thankful for the time that you've given me this evening. As I stated, my name is Kimberly Middleton. I've been a Stevensville resident since April two thousand eight with a brief sabbatical when I left to go to take care of my mother in San Angelo after my dad's passing. I could not get back to the city of Stevensville fast enough. I'm a mama and as of January, I'm a nonnie. Pictures are available upon request, that's kind of the most important.
You posting them?
As a career, I am a school teacher. I'm a mystery shopper here in the community of Stevensville, so if you see me shopping, just go on by. I'm also a school teacher and I'm beginning my fourth year as a employee of the city of Stevensville at Splashville. First, I would like to sincerely thank you for your commitment to Splashville. And I want to point out, one of the managers, several of the lifeguards came out this evening. They found out I was speaking tonight and we are a team over there. And I just want to acknowledge them and thank them for being here tonight. Splashville provides affordable and essential seasonal recreation for our community members right here at home in this county and in this region. I'm proud to serve with exceptional professionals. Darren Tressel put up with me visiting for a little bit yesterday. Brad Mills, Brett Moore, Suzette Morales and Sky Gatton are amazing leaders and unlike ever before, they have provided unparalleled training so that Splashville will be a safe and fun venue for all the patrons that we serve in this community. That segues into my next point. As we were training at Splashville this past weekend, we were joined by EMS. Steve Jacobson and his crew were encouraging, supportive and provided the essential instruction that we needed as a team. Dan Harris, the chief of police and Robert Isbell, fire chief, also provide support, not only to Splashville, but to every resident of the city of Stevensville. I wrote a letter to each one of you in March and I never received even one response, so I'm here to remind you what I stated at that time. As I stated, I'm a public school teacher. People willing to provide public service, including teaching, lifeguarding, emergency services, are few and far between. As a teacher, if I'm ill or have a family emergency and can't do my job, the principal or the secretary certainly can step in and ensure that the students that are in my care are provided with appropriate supervision.
Jason's taking life safety courses right now, so he can step in.
Who is? Jason is? Come join us. I hope this isn't taking on my, come join us over at Splashville. We'll set up scenarios for him, won't we guys? Yeah. We'll let you drown and catch you back anyway. Okay, so back to it. In the real world, that might not work so well. At Splashville, my lifeguards, like I said, our lifeguards, they're mine. They're trained and ready better than ever before, but in the case of a middle-aged gentleman presenting with symptoms of a stroke or a heart attack, we need and depend on the support of emergency medical services. In my own home, I have college students that live on my right, on my left and across the street. I'm the old woman. As stated, I'm a mom first and I introduce myself to each one of them and their parents when possible as they move into my neighborhood. I bake cookies for them, check on them if they're feeling badly, check to make sure they're attending classes and I offer them rides when their cars break down. It all works out fine until that Thursday night party. If I'm woken up from a sound sleep, my neighbors know that when my front porch light comes on, they have approximately fifteen minutes to get things under control and settled. It works out well overall. However, if the fire pit in the backyard gets out of control or a fight breaks out because the boys have had a little too much to drink, I'm going to depend on the fire department and the police department of the city of Stevensville. On a larger scale, imagine living in a nicer home over on the golf course or out in the estates off of Alexander Road, being on vacation and being alerted that you're, by your ring doorbell, that someone is trying to break into your home. Or perhaps you're pulling out a Domino's pizza on a Friday night and you get T-boned by a careless driver. Your car is totaled, your airbags have deployed and you're requiring physical care. No offense, but when we need first responders, we don't want their secretaries to cover for them. And I'm sure their secretaries are amazing, in case any of you are that role. Stevensville's an amazing city and I absolutely love living here. However, in the past few months, others have taken this podium and asked for your support of our emergency services crews. Stevensville falls behind Dublin, Brownwood, Boski County, Comanche, Granberry, Hood County and Weatherford in financial support of our emergency services. This creates an issue with hiring and retaining quality and qualified individuals to work and to remain as residents of the city of Stevensville. I don't have the solution. That's the one thing that bothered me about this whole presentation, so bear with me. One thing I do know is it's going to cost money to remedy. I am asking you to take under consideration what needs to be done to provide funding for all the people who serve the residents of Stevensville. As a public school educator and homeowner, I'm aware that I'm likely asking you to increase my taxes. I get that. I'm good. I'm also broke, by the way, but I work three different jobs, so it's good. I am aware that I'm likely advocating for higher taxes, but I'm still asking you to research and offer the electorate a well-considered and reasonable option together with financial responsibility and transparent accountability to provide for these essential services. Tarleton State University is growing exponentially. With college growth comes additional community population, retail, job opportunities and need for timely and efficient emergency service responses and times. Stevensville is growing. If my limited research is correct, Stevensville has grown about twenty-seven percent since I moved here in two thousand eight and it's not showing any signs of slowing down. And I just lost where I am, sorry. The agenda got mixed up in my papers. The city depends on you to address the challenges head-on before we face an emergency that is caused by a lack of staffing and a lack of equipment available. Please know that I'm here, I'm willing and I'm able to provide any support that's within my scope of power as you do your job to support and lead this community. I thank you for your commitment to Stevensville, your consideration, your time and your support. I really am grateful for y'all. And I came a couple of months ago because I wanted to see how city council meetings went. I'll be here again, but as a school teacher, I have to do this. What questions do you have for me? Crickets, just like my math classes.
Ma'am, the council's unable to converse with you.
Perfect, perfect.
Due to the open meetings laws.
Thank you for that explanation and thank you for your time. And I'll look forward to some kind of a response eventually or I'll follow up with y'all. Thank you.
Next item is Airport Advisory Board. Ricky, you gonna do that one? I was gonna call you councilman, but. No, no, no. Shannon, you here to make sure you're doing it right?
Mayor and council, the Airport Advisory Board met this last Thursday, the twenty-ninth, and the board agreed that we needed to come before the council and thank the council and city staff for a lot of the improvements that have been made at the airport over the last year, year and a half. So I was elected as the person that gets to talk, so. Just a brief list of these, and I know Sean kind of went over some of this, I think, last month, but there's been new HVAC registers replaced in the airport lobby. The old ones were molded and condensation was coming through and creating a slip fall hazard. That's been fixed. The parking lot's been restripped. Most of the airfield signs are now LED. A lot of them weren't working at all, but they've been converted to LED, so there, it's greater visibility and has lowered operating costs. We had a bathroom that was non-operational down in one of the hangar rows for several months. That's been repaired and that serves all of the hangars on the south end of the airport. There's the trees at the end of runway three-two have now been cleared. That's been an ongoing problem. It was a safety hazard for departing and arriving aircraft. And so that's been cleared up and it was also necessary for the expansion of the runway. So that's one step closer. There's been a new credit card reader that's been installed at the fuel pumps, which I can tell you from experience is very welcome. That was a frustrating pedestal that was there and both staff and the FBO operator have reported that they're no longer getting phone calls Saturday nights and Sundays for people who can't get fuel. So that's great, should, hopefully that will increase fuel sales as well. I've had several successful fly-ins. Our last one this last March was the largest we've had so far. I think there were, was it sixty-two aircraft, Sean? Sixty-one aircraft that visited Stevensville that day. And of course, thousands of residents that came out and were exposed to aviation and what the airport's all about. Received a new delivery certificate from TCEQ that doesn't expire until next year. So in the past, we've had some troubles with that being delayed, which causes us to not be able to sell fuel at all sometimes for a month at a time. So that's been corrected. The airport layout plan is almost complete from KSA, which is not only a requirement for the extension, but also gives us a guide now for future development at the airport. You guys approved a lease agreement with Lively Aviation, which is a flight school that has a base in Cleburne and they've now put in a location here and they reported at the advisory board meeting, they have twenty-two students enrolled in Stevensville for flight training. So that's a great addition. Crack seal was done on several of the hangar aprons. That's been probably a year ago. But that was, of course, improves the longevity of those aprons, of the surface and also reduces risk of damage to aircraft from kicking up rocks and things that come out of those cracks, so. And the main thing is, the vast majority of this was paid for with state and federal maintenance grants that we qualify for and Sean and Darrell have been very diligent in making sure we get every dollar that we can out of TechDOT and out of the FAA to make sure that we get those improvements done. So thank you for all the approvals that you've given and the attention you've given to the airport and for Jason and Monica and Darrell and Sean for all the work that they've done out there as well. So everyone has noticed it and it's greatly appreciated.
Appreciate it. Any questions for Ricky? Jason, while we're here, why don't you give a little bit of update on the FAA and the expansion project?
Kind of like Mr. Thurman stated.
I think we got, since we have a newspaper, it'd be good to have that kind of details in there.
Yes sir. Once the airport land plan is finalized, then we'll be back on TechDOT Aviation. We would hope that that would put us at construction before the end of the year's out, but.
That was a threat I made.
Yes sir, that is what they told us.
I told them.
So, once the airport land plan is finalized and accepted.
Then that expansion project is about how much altogether? Cost dollar-wise?
Last estimates I saw on it were somewhere between fifteen, eighteen million.
And our portion's ten percent of that?
Yes sir.
Okay. And when I started on council, that total was, our portion was five hundred thousand. That's what the delays cost us. The city, citizens Stevensville's cost us about a million bucks in them delaying the project. Actually kicking us off the project and getting us back along, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Jason. Next item, is Steve gonna give the presentation about the annexation?
No sir, I'm handling that this evening. He's overseas.
Overseas?
Yes sir. Mayor, council, if you look in your packets this evening, we're asking you to consider the voluntary annexation of a piece of property that's out at the two eighty-one and FM eight intersection. A little triangle piece just south of Rocky Creek Builders. The owners of the property gave us their petition for annexation back in April and staff's been working on that process. And so we just received, before the start of this meeting, the signed municipal services agreement that's required by law and by ordinance that dictates what services would be provided. And so that's now agreed to. We've met the notice requirements, the posting requirements, and so we would ask you to conduct a public hearing and then consider an ordinance to annex that property.
Questions for Jason? Here now, we'll enter into a public hearing to consider the voluntary annexation of property in response to petition requesting annexation by area landowners for a tract of land being seven point five seven seven acres of the A oh eight oh zero four Williams M R survey parcel R seventy-six six eighty located within the city. Extra territorial jurisdiction, we did produce a public notice for voluntary annexation. I guess we got no comments. Anybody would like to come speak in favor or in opposition to the proposal? Here now, we'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I propose, I would move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero dash eighteen, which would be the voluntary annexation question.
Have a motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Next item is consider approval of an ordinance annexing the five point seven seven. We had a public hearing, that was what that was, wasn't it?
Yes sir, you were kind of about.
Approval of the purchase of an EMS training mannequin. Robert? Y'all notice how trim he looks now? Been working out with those firemen, huh?
Mayor, council, good evening.
They're always noticing now.
So we're seeking approval tonight for the purchase of a EMS training mannequin. It's a very advanced simulation mannequin that goes just hand in hand with our critical care and CRP services that we are providing now. We had budgeted forty thousand dollars for it, but we have a savings enough to include all of the package. Up to sixty-five thousand dollars is what we're looking for approval of, so that it will allow us to do all of the, practice the interventions that we're actually doing in the field. Sonogram, all the EKG, everything that we're doing, advanced life support, we'll be able to do on this mannequin. We, in the past, we had used Tarleton's nursing lab mannequins. They're different. They're specific for nursing. And we don't do some of the things that the nurses do. They don't do some of the things that we do. Therefore, their high-end mannequins aren't conducive with the services that we're practicing. So be happy to answer any questions. I know it's a, it's a, it's a large capital piece for our training.
Only question I have is, Monica, money there? Any other questions for Robert?
Chief, what's the anticipated lifespan of such a piece of equipment?
Wow, that's a good question. This is, it's like technology, so I'm thinking it's going to be somewhere in that ten to fifteen years for what we're paying for. I'm hoping that that's exactly what we're getting out of it. That's not something that I've really researched as much as I know that they've been around for a long time and they keep adding to it with the technologies that come along. So I know that it has modules you can buy. I don't want to get too graphic, but you can make them replicate all human bodily functions and it's pretty realistic. And outside of real-life experiences, we can't duplicate the training that we would be able to get from these mannequins.
And this is part of the training regimen that we go through for all of our EMS personnel, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Councilman, I'm sure they accept live volunteers, too.
How good is there?
Any other questions for Robert?
Are we replacing anything? Is this replacing anything?
No, sir, we had budgeted, this is a new item. We've had CPR mannequins and that sort, they're very basic and non-interactive. This one actually we'll be able to interact with. We'll be able to put someone in front of it as if they were in front of a patient.
Other questions?
Chief, you mentioned earlier that it was budgeted at forty thousand dollars, but the cost with the add-ons is about sixty-six thousand. Did I understand you correctly that you had enough leftover from cardiac monitor budget line item?
Yes sir.
In order to make up the difference?
We've realized a savings that will more than cover that difference in our. We had budgeted for cardiac monitors, was able to purchase them earlier this year and was able to save more than that amount difference. And that's why we were seeking approval to go above and beyond with this, to take us to the next level.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make the motion that we approve the purchase of the advanced EMS training mannequin.
A motion and second, all in favor, say aye. Motion passes, thank you sir.
Thank you very much.
Acceptance of the NYC three ball field construction bid, contract, construction bid. There you go, I guess that's gonna be. Aaron?
Bring my computer in case you have some questions.
This can be long.
So what we're asking for tonight, what we're seeking, y'all have actually given us permission. We went out and hired an architect. We developed a plan for this field. We came back and now we've gone out to bid for this project and so now we're seeking permission to accept the bid for this project. And we have, we're wanting to accept the bid with the caveat that we would remove some items from the base bid. Those items are listed as number seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven and twelve, twenty-five, twenty-seven and twenty-nine. Three of those items will be removed completely from the base bid. We don't, we no longer need those items because of some changes we're making in the construction. And so we're just asking for acceptance of this with the removal of those items from the base bid. We've discussed that with the contractor to make sure that that's agreeable with them. So we believe we can move forward with that project and get this field done.
Questions for Darren?
Will you repeat those numbers again, sorry?
Seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, twenty-five, twenty-seven and twenty-nine in that. It should be in your proposal. You should have some paperwork on that. He's got a computer working. So, the big, the big things in that? You go ahead.
No, just so you're talking about the backup netting system and.
The backstop netting system was a big one. We realized a pretty significant cost savings by, we'll bring that on and I'll handle that internally. We'll handle sourcing that and getting that product lined in with the construction. But there's a pretty, like ninety to a hundred thousand dollar cost savings on us bringing it in and doing it internally. The other big one was just the construction method for the backstop system wall and the dugout systems where we've worked with prime metal buildings to develop a plan to build those in a steel structure instead of doing the traditional block structure. And we think that'll tie in better to what we're looking at futuristically with the park.
Other questions?
So the drainage is a part of the stuff that we're taking off?
Drainage is removed from the, from the plan entirely. The sub-surface drainage is there because you had a block wall at the back of that. Now that you don't have that block wall anymore, it'll allow water flow. No longer need that.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mayor, that we accept the NYC ball field construction bid.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes, thank you sir.
All right, thank y'all.
Consider, come on Nick, I guess this is, I know this is Monica, I guess. Consider approval of professional service agreement with new gen strategies and solutions completed water and wastewater rate study.
Guess it's been about four years ago, we contracted with Frees and Nichols to do our rate study for the construction project. for the construction projects that we had, that we knew at the time. We've put those rate structures into those rate increases. We've done those. This last one, I believe, was the last of four. Since it's been a while, we need to go in and update those, our projects that weren't part of the original and update the prices on them. The gentleman that performed that rate study has jumped ship from Fries and Nichols into New Gen. It's gonna be the same one that we did before. It's $57,687. We did not have that in the budget, but we have some money left over in the wastewater treatment plant, capital, equipment, maintenance that we can move to cover it. And I've included that with the budget adjustments that you'll vote on later. So we're just asking permission to get that updated to see what we need to do for the future.
Questions for Monica?
Monica, for, just for my information, when, when we do this update, I'm gonna call it to our rate structure. Do we, do we ask them to do it for a set period of time, three years, five years, or is it fluid? No pun intended.
I'm, I'm gonna take that one for her.
Thank you.
If council will recall, when we originally asked Mr. Campbell, when he was with FNI, to do a rate model, it was a 10-year model that was gonna fund about $130 million worth of improvements. We have, we're in the fourth year of that model. And that has worked well. You guys have done one large debt issuance at the front end of that model. We've completed several projects, the well field, the pump station out at where Polito's used to be. Some other large-scale projects. Long Street was partially out of that fund. So as we're completing engineering for Phase 3 of Eastside sewer, engineering on the next ground storage tank, we need to begin engineering on a third water tower. And then as we move forward beyond engineering into construction on those, we've gotta kinda hit reset with where we're at the model. And we need to work with Mr. Campbell to at least add another 10 years and say, okay, we want to fund now, make sure we're, we're able to include these projects in those water, in wastewater funds. And so we've asked him to make that adjustment. This should be a little easier since the, the big work was creating that whole model in the first place. Now we're making kind of a smaller adjustment to that, to create that room to move forward with the next set of big projects for the council, both from a maintenance standpoint and an improvement and expansion. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mayor, I'd move that we enter into an agreement with New Gen Strategies and Solutions for Water Wastewater Rate Study.
Second. A motion as second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I guess Monica here, the next one, the motion passes.
We have provided for budget amendments. Really, unless you insist, do not want to go through all of these individual by individual. What I will say is a good chunk of them are just carryovers from money that wasn't spent the previous year and truing up our projects, 'cause I don't have a crystal ball to know exactly to the penny how much money we're gonna spend on a project by the end of the year. So we take our best guess at it and then we adjust it once we get the final numbers in and accounted for. So that's what the bulk of them are. The other things are things that were approved either like an executive or in council between October 1st and current. And I've also included some of the things that you'll see coming before you tonight, like the one we just did for the, the rate study. The inclusive playground and then some monies for the police department that they'll be wanting to spend out of the public safety. So that just kinda sums it up. If you look at the staff report, the, the new, the new things that we're bringing in, that'll decrease the fund balance in the general fund by 382,296. The water and wastewater fund balance will decrease 416,550. Stormwater drainage fund balance will decrease by 46,000. The hotel occupancy tax fund will decrease by 13,470. And the public safety fund balance will decrease by 47,000.
Questions for Monica? Do any here, any questions?
Yeah. On the public safety fund balance, what is the decrease? What, what's causing the decrease on that?
So the, the public safety fund balance, that's from forfeiture funds and then like LEOs funds. And so we typically budget our LEOs funds, our training funds every year. But the, what we've added this year is he's, and I believe some of that stuff's coming tonight, where he'll be asking for like a couple drones and a trailer for the motorcycles and then.
You're stealing all the chief's thunder right now.
I know it. I was trying not to. I was just kinda like, let him have it. But, and then because we've had a lot of turnover and so every time we have an officer come in, we gotta get uniforms. And then if they leave, they don't always fit the next guy. And so we've added some additional money. I think they were getting some caps and some patches and then also for some summer uniforms for some of their newbies.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Sheriff, you wanna make that motion?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
It's an actual ordinance. If you'll look a couple down in the documents, it'll be an approval of ordinance number 2025-0.
19. 2025-0-19?
What she said. Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, I make the motion to approve ordinance 2025-0-19.
Motion as second. Did you have a question, Dave Brandon?
No.
You're trying to say, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Jason, you gonna take the landfill?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think everybody knows several weeks ago, the community of Gordon was hit with a tornado and they had some significant damage in that community. The mayor from Gordon reached out to Mr. Williams and myself asking for some potential assistance with landfill fee waivers as they work on getting the community cleaned up. Friday, last Friday, Mr. Williams and I drove up there, met with the mayor. She kind of explained the situation to us. And so they're, they think approximately less than 100 households or house sites that need to be demoed at some level and the debris come to the landfill. And so they're working with a couple of contractors. We've developed a logistical process that we think works. We've developed, kinda like our landfill passes that we do for our citizens here a couple times a year. We've developed one specifically for Gordon that we can get to them. They're actually working with a couple of different contractors in the city. They were onsite as well. So staff thinks there's a process that works very well for this. Staff would recommend that council consider issuing landfill fee waivers for this matter.
Questions for Jason?
I have a comment, not really a question. I think it's our duty to be good neighbors here and to help out our, our neighbors when they're in need. So with that, I'll make the motion to approve the fee waivers as presented.
A second. A motion as second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item, position federal asset forfeiture funding to purchase two unmanned aerial systems. Oh, no. Oh, yes. Chief.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of council, the first item that I have for you tonight is that approval for the utilization of our federal asset forfeiture funds. And what that is, is drug seizure money. So for many years prior to my arrival under City Manager King, and then also continuing on through that is we partner with the United States Federal Government, the Drug Enforcement Administration for narcotics enforcement in this region. But especially Steenville and City County and Erazo County. As part of that, as cases are adjudicated, Mrs. Harris receives money from the federal government that from that, as that forfeiture is seized and finalized in the court process. Utilizing that, that money has been customary for us to come forward to you. And that is, you know, outside of the normal budget. But we, these are drones that we will, will make our officers safer, will make this community safer. And we're excited that it's not costing the taxpayers any money in that sense. So, any, any questions?
How much does the, do we spend on officers participating in that same program?
How much do we spend? So we have a sergeant, detective sergeant, and a detective. And the sheriff's office provides a detective sergeant and a detective also. And so their salaries and benefits is full-time for that. Yes, sir.
Run general fund, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So could this be used to offset those expenses?
It cannot, it cannot be used for salaries and benefits in that sense. It can be used for equipment. Yes, sir.
It can only be used for equipment?
Correct. And there's stipulations around that, but primarily that's what it is. Yes, sir. But not for personnel.
And we are, so we already have officers trained, I think, on this?
We do. Yes, sir.
Do I hear a question for the chief? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the use of federal assets to purchase the two unmanned aerial systems.
Second. Got a motion as second. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Consider approval of expenditure for production, broadcast, distribution, International Association of Chiefs of Police. I guess that's you.
Yes, sir. So, Mr. Mayor, distinguished members of council, again, the city of Steenville in the past, and City Manager King especially, has worked with this company called Webz Edge to produce two high-quality videos, film productions about the city of Steenville and marketing the city of Steenville. They reached out to me as they are contractors also for the ICP, as it is known for, International Associations of Chiefs of Police, for ICP TV. And I have been a member of them for years, many years prior to coming here. And what ICP TV does is each year, they select a handful of departments throughout hundreds. For example, state of Texas has 2,800 law enforcement agencies approximately. So imagine how many law enforcement agencies there are in the United States. Now, this is a partnership that does cost us a little bit of money that is outside of our budget. But what this does is this puts us on the global network of this department, this city, and who we are looking for to be long-term members. And that is one of my number-one goals. This project is to retain top-notch professional law enforcement officers. And so what this company does is produces a film about the Steenville Police Department and the city of Steenville that will be aired in mid-October. So this crosses over next year's budget cycle. And what that does, that film is first aired to almost over 30,000 law enforcement leaders from around the world. And then we retain the rights after that for everything about it. We have, we retain all editorial rights related to it. And we take this project and then we use it, for example, we're almost at 23,000 followers on our police department Facebook page. And that climbs every day. And so when, I have applicants that come to us, considering one they have right now, I'm gonna see every single one of them say, we studied you on Facebook and that's why we want to come work here. And so we were able to take this footage and, and the other parts that they make after October and utilize this for however we want to do that, for retention, recruiting, hiring, retaining police officers for the city of Steenville. So it's, it's, this year's feature is leadership and the leadership aspects of your agencies and what you do for your community service and what you provide for your community. So this is outside of the asset forfeiture funding, so don't confuse that, 'cause that's the next item going back to that. So I've been working with the city manager and finance director as we work through the budget process and determine how we will fund this going forward.
Questions for the chief?
Chief, I'm gathering that you're looking at this more as a recruitment tool.
That's the key emphasis, but there's more.
How many positions do we have open on the police department?
We have five.
So we have five. And I know we're usually, we're usually short.
Yes, sir. I have several that have applied at other departments. And I have six in three different training academies and two in field training and two on long-term injured reserve. Yes, sir.
Other questions?
Cost for this is $26,000?
Yes, sir.
Chief, what's the length of this production?
The primary film is five minutes long.
Okay.
And so there's some samples in your packet. If you have time later on, you can click on those, especially for the Metroplex and other departments that have utilized that and have spoke with other chiefs who.
There's a couple on Facebook right now.
Correct. Yes, sir. There's a YouTube TV channel that these will also be aired on. And multiple avenues there in addition to what we do with it.
Are these successful tools for all departments to use in the modern technology world?
And showcasing your world here, in your department, wherever that is, to come forward and say, come join us. Or come live and, and work in Steenville.
Mr. Next, the two that the city has done have, I think we've had pretty good success with them. The first one was straight-up agreement like this, but it was instead of Chiefs of Police, it was for the International City Manager Association. In that one, we had the mayor, Jeff, Dr. Hurley, Judge Huck. I mean, we had a whole cross-segment of the community. It's a real nice video. I've heard about that one in a lot of places when I've traveled for meetings or even talking to developers that have wanted to come in the community to see that one. The second one was the mayor, me, and Reagan Thompson. We filmed that one down at Blue Eye Buffalo. When we had a chamber mixer several months ago that we hosted, and I do not recall her name, but I remember a lady walked up to both me and the mayor, wanted to introduce herself. She was trying to find her husband in there, too. They were from South Dakota, North Dakota, were picking up to move, didn't know where they wanted to go or where they were gonna move. Watched one of those two videos and said, we're going to Steenville, Texas. That's where we're going. But I've also heard lots of feedback from different companies considering coming to town. So they are very professionally done. And I told the chief, I thought, you know, that's probably not a bad strategy, you know.
Who else have a question? Do I hear a motion?
Question. Which is gonna have general funds or is this out of your budget? I'm sorry.
General, not reserved yet.
Other questions?
Mayor, I'd make the motion to approve the presentation for the film that the chief has just presented with Webz Edge.
A motion as second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. You gonna talk about the?
Yes, sir.
Trailer.
Yes, sir. As the same, as the previous one on asset forfeiture funds, so we'll go back into that same part. Is, we're gonna use this trailer for our transportation of our motorcycle, our two motorcycles. It's okay on this one.
Doctor Timberlake gave you such a.
The honor of a game.
Yes, sir.
You lost your craft.
That's right. It's okay. It's, uh, this one is primarily to, for the transportation, but we'll share it with our honor guard team. So it will be used for community events. We do plan on wrapping that with, with action scenes and those type of things and have a canopy where we can take it to the park and have park events, different things like that, that this trailer will not just be used for the, our equipment transportation.
Appreciate the guys wearing the bloomers, too.
Yes, sir.
Another part of the deal, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Any questions for the chief? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the purchase of the, the launch trailer.
Second.
A motion as second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Bitcher killing, did I zoom in from overseas? Are you gonna handle it, Jason?
I think I got it.
You got it, okay.
All right. All right, Mr. Mayor, council, we're considering a rezone of the piece of property located at 365 Cheyenne. Parcel number R34541, Block D, Lot 8, S6900 Westgate Edition of the city of Steenville, Erazo County, Texas. From R1, single-family residential, to R2.5, integrated housing. The Planning and Zoning Commission convened on May 21st and by a vote of five to two, recommended the city council approve the rezone request. The Steenville 2050 Comprehensive Plan designates future land use as community core and open space hazard. The open space hazard designation is due to the property being located in the Zone X, 0.2% annual flood plain according to the FEMA flood zone map. And with that, I'll answer any question.
Questions for Jason? Or Mr. Ramirez is here. You kept speaking. Questions for Jason, or Mr. Ramirez is here. You can speak if you want.
Jason, I have one question. In the application from the applicant, it's, he's asking for R1 to R2, but in our packet, it's R2.5. And I was a little, I was a little confused by that.
Mr. Ramirez, state your name and address, and I'll give you a few minutes to sketch your request.
Thank you. I'm Juan Ramirez. I am the property owner of 365 Cheyenne Drive. I currently live in Crowley.
Ooh.
We had two little ones and families over there, and my mom's a blessing to have, so, excuse me. But, um, I bought that house 13 years ago, thanks to David approving the loan when I was 19. And I bought the house. So, we're here because of him. Yeah. But, I bought that house. I lived in that house for close to about 10 years, and have been leasing it for the past three years. In two years of owning it, I reached out to the city to see if I can actually build a shop, because I got tired of mowing that side lot. And I was told that, "Hey, yes, you can do something like that." Obviously, never went through that, and have been just kind of saving. And I knew that was something that, you know, eventually I could utilize that lot for some type of investment, and that's why I'm here today, and have recently just submitted that rezone. So, that rezone for your question, I did, when I was looking at everything and all the details. I'm not a huge developer. I'm just an engineer. I have an engineering background, just kind of looking at the paperwork. I submitted it for one to two. And after looking at the actual setbacks and lot requirements, that actually will not work for me, because that will require 100-foot depth, and I don't have that right there. What I have is 75. For front width, I have 54, which does meet the requirements for the 2.5 under the single family. Now, I would like to-
Is there a question now?
Yeah. And so, that's why it, it changed. When I first submitted it in the paperwork, that's why it was two. But after some discussions with planning and zoning, we, we decided, "Hey, no, the best option for me is to actually just submit it as 2.5." I know there's been some concerns. I've talked to the neighbors, that they believe a townhome, the current structure is going to be destroyed and demolished, and townhomes are going to go there. But according to my calculations, my survey, I can only fit one townhome there. It makes absolutely no sense for me to take down the current structure. Instead, just utilize that empty lot to build a single-family home and offer it to the Steenville community.
Questions to Mr. Ramirez?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Ramirez, what size of a lot do you have?
So, the empty one is-
No, not the empty one, because it's not really an empty one. You have one lot right now.
Yes, yes. The whole lot itself is 137.9. That's the front width, and the depth is 75. So, the current house is, go ahead. The current house, the structure there, is taking a little bit over half of that, giving me the 54 frontage and the 75 depth on the side lot, or the side yard, to utilize for R2.5.
You had mentioned that you would add additional parking.
Yes. So, in, in the paperwork that I submitted, I mentioned that, you know, I would work with the city of Steenville to, if I need to make any upgrades to the current home, 365 itself. Right now, it, it only has one driveway, one single-car driveway. And if I need to add additional parking, I can definitely do that. I have the, it's a corner lot, so I have enough space on the side or in the front to expand that. Of course, working with the city and making sure it's permitted.
It wasn't very clear in your application whether or not you intended to have the, uh, the house that you would propose to split this lot and build on this next, by splitting the lot, use the back half of it to build another house, as to whether or not that house would be, have a garage or not.
Yeah. I, I would have to sit down, based on the available size. I think I only have about 30 to 40 available, as in the building window or the building volume to build on. So, I would have to actually sit down and get some custom drawings to see if I can put a single car to match the neighborhood, because just about all the neighborhood has a single-car garage, or expand that to a two-car garage. I've been looking to build possibly two stories to ensure that there's three bedrooms, two baths available in the property, or that house.
Other questions?
So, the current structure is facing Comanche, and you're going to want the new structure to face Cheyenne.
No, so the current structure is facing Cheyenne, 365 Cheyenne Drive.
Current one is facing Cheyenne?
Yes. Yeah. So, it's, if you, if you drive that way, the house is actually at the very corner lot by the fire hydrant, and next to it, yeah. So, the, the side lot, the one that I call the empty lot, is actually still on Cheyenne Drive.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Mr. Nix, did, did we get an answer to your question?
I asked you.
Yes. Okay. Yes, I, I had one more question, since he brought that up.
Go ahead.
Did the, with the proximity of these two structures, will there be an issue with another curb cut there for entrance to that property for a driveway?
The, the driveways are on, would be on opposite sides, pretty much.
Okay.
So, the driveway is closer, I know it's difficult to see in this picture, but it's closer to the very corner of that whole lot. And where the home structure, the new one that I'm proposing would go, would actually be close to 40-ish feet away from it.
Okay. And that, is that, is that a adequate separation, Mr. King?
I think he's probably okay. I don't have the engineering standards manual in front of me, but that, I mean, it'd be something in the design process that he would work with our staff on those distances.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other want to say?
Yeah. So, again, this is just an investment that I'm trying to do for my family, my kids.
From Crowley, though.
Well, it's, it's investing it here in Steenville, and we, we come often still for friends, to visit friends. But this property, I plan to hold for a long time, and even building the new one, I plan to hold for a very long time. I know one of the neighbors just questioned, you know, "Are you, are you going to sell it once you build?" I was like, "No, this is an investment that I want to hold. I'm in my young 30s, and I plan to hold it until 70s, 80s."
Do you remember when you were like, "Be 30, Alan?"
I was once.
So, but with that, you know, I appreciate your time, and I'm, I'm always open to, you know, to answer any questions.
Any other questions? Hearing now will enter in a public hearing related to the application of RZ8830. So, anyone who wants to speak in favor or opposition to the request. Hearing now will close the public hearing. Consider approval of the ordinance rezoning property located at 365 Cheyenne, parcel 30, R34541, being blocked, D, lot eight of S6900 Westgate Edition of the city of Steenville. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we deny the application. And I'd like to explain why I made that motion. I used to live out there in that neighborhood. In fact, I lived on Omaha Street. Uh, that neighborhood has been around for about 50 years. Uh, it has, uh, all of the homes and all of the lots, there's none of the lots that have been split. They're all the same width, they're all the same length, basically, that they were originally. All of the homes are, tend to be brick homes. All of them tend to have either one, some of them have two-car garages, most of them have one-car garages. Uh, they're all in the 1,200 to 1,400 square foot range. Most of them down at the lower end of that, as a matter of fact, because they were, they were built originally as F, F farmer's home houses. And, uh, the, I don't know if there's any neighbors, I don't think there are any here, but we've all received about five or six letters from several of them. If you recall back about, oh, a couple of years ago, we were in a discussion with regard to another developer who had purchased some lots off of South Dale Street, and one lot off of one of the streets here, one of the first streets here. And with the intent saying that they were going to build a single-family home, and they ended up building, uh, seven bedrooms and seven-bath homes with a small living room. Well, that, it doesn't take a genius to figure out what they were really after at the time. Now, as it turns out, they didn't qualify for it to be anything other than what it is, and, and to qualify other than, uh, single-family. And I think our city was really strongly, uh, strong about that, as a matter of fact, in, in not allowing it to, those to be apartments. And, uh, the people that lived out there in the Westgate Edition were all really concerned about it at the time. I think the city did a good job of trying to, to, uh, meet their concerns and everything like that. This, there, this is taking an existing house, basically, and lot, and not, it's not a vacant lot behind it. It's the backyard. It's splitting that particular thing and putting in a two-story house there. That's what you're trying to do. And it will require a curb cut, and it may, in the future, require, I mean, you may decide to tear the other house down, because it, you know, and whatnot. I'm just, I'm really concerned about that for the future. I've gone out there, I've looked at it, and closely, in fact, three times. Uh, and, uh, there's no other 2.5 out there. There's no other vacant lots. Well, there's one vacant lot. Uh, uh, but there are no others. And typically, we have done 2.5 where there are, um, mixed uses going on in the community, and where we're looking at new, new additions going in. Uh, where we're going into a fully established, existing one like this, we haven't done that. So, that's what concerns me, and that's why I'm-
Do we need a second to keep talking about this, or do we?
Yeah, we do.
We need a second.
Okay.
We need a second.
Well, that's, that's, that's-
Okay. That's my motion.
We're going into discussion here, and so, just-
Well, just, he has opportunity, ask for permission.
Okay.
I, I'll second Mr. Cook's motion, if we need that to move the discussion.
You have a motion, a second to deny. All in favor to deny the request, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Okay. So, all opposed to the motion?
Aye.
Aye. We have, let's get a roll, roll call vote.
Roll call.
We have place ones out, place two?
I'm-
You need the motion to deny?
Yes.
Place three?
Motion to deny.
Please.
Motion to deny.
Approve.
Approve.
To deny.
So, what is that, one, two, three, four to three?
Mm-hmm.
And so, all I can do is make a motion to vote to tie, right?
Yep.
Can I make a motion? My vote is to not to deny. I disagree with that. But I can make, I can vote to make a tie as well. And therefore, the, the vote is, it doesn't pass. Is that correct?
That's correct.
With that in mind, do we have our motion to approve the request?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the request.
Got a motion and a second. Let me write this down. My hand doesn't work as well after that stroke. Okay? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye, no.
Is there a roll call vote again? Place one is gone, place two?
No.
Place three?
No.
Place four?
No.
Place five, yes? Place six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
No.
Mayor votes yes, that's another tie, so that means the request doesn't, isn't approved.
Correct.
Okay, next item is Ms. Durfee's chair. She's gone. Are you going to make that report? Mr. Cook's going to do it?
Well, it's going to be a very quick report.
Good.
That's personal, Gerald.
I, I, I had actually asked Sean to, to, to get up and speak, but I, at that time, I forgot that Ricky Thurman was going to get up and speak and give a full report. Sean, you're off the hook. Uh, and, but, uh, we had a great, during that last meeting, Sean actually presented a lot of the information with regard to the airport. Uh, there was a Main Street quarterly update. There's been another audit in the downtown area with regard to, uh, the needs, particularly had to do with sidewalks, curbs, uh, some of the small things that are infrastructure investments that need to be made or would be looked at in the future, and they'll come back to the council with. Uh, the tourism report, uh, was done by Ally Whitworth, and, and it had to do with where our standing was with regard to, uh, other communities, namely Granbury, Weatherford, uh, and mineral wells, and in comparison to our, how our hotels were doing versus how their hotels were doing. There was no action taken, and, and so, that is the report.
Mr. Reeseman, Parks and Leisure.
Yes, so, Darren here. Anything you want to say?
Making sure he's awake. You went that way in class?
He's ready to go.
Ready?
He's ready to go.
He said in class you were never awake?
No, I didn't say that.
At the last committee meeting, we approved, uh, through committee, the approval of phase three of the inclusive playground. So, we're just asking tonight to receive council approval to move forward with that project, so we can go ahead and get that thing ordered and on the ground for these kids.
Any questions for Darren about approval of phase three of the city park inclusive playground? It's one of the greatest things we've done in Steenville, Texas.
No questions, call it Darren. Thank you so much for working so hard on getting this done for all of our residents here that come and enjoy our beautiful parks.
No problem.
With that, I make a motion, we approve whatever he do-
I don't think-
Don't, no. Can't say anything else?
I will, I will second that, whatever.
Spend all your money.
Yeah.
Got a motion, I hear a second. Long?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Darren.
Monica.
Mayor, council, you have before you the budget report for the period ending August, I mean, April 30th, 2025, seven months into our fiscal year. Our indicators are about what we had anticipated at this point. We received 56,000 in property tax in the month of April. That's 406,000 over the funds collected last fiscal year to date. We've collected 99% of our budget, which is about 68,000 more than what we anticipated. We received 683,000 in sales tax in April. It's a little bit smaller than last year. It's 42,000 or 1% more than the funds collected last fiscal year to date. Uh, we've collected about 61% of our budget, and that's about 167,000 more than we anticipated. Of our 30.5 million revenue received to date, 60% was received in the general fund, and 24 was in the water, wastewater fund. 4% was received in our debt service fund, um, and the landfill fund. And then, we received 3% in our stormwater drainage fund, and 2% in our capital projects fund. We received 72% of our total budgeted revenue through April. That's 2 million more than we anticipated, and that's due to taxes, licenses, and permits. Thank you, SISD, and interest income and some other revenue. Uh, we received 729,000 less revenue through April than last fiscal year to date. That's due to intergovernmental. Last year was when we received the money from Tarleton, um, to help with the Harbin Drive. So, um, of the, we would love to have that again, by the way, if we could find a way to get them to, to give us some more money, Dr. Hurley. Um, of our 26.8 million expenditures, uh, to date, 48% was expended in the general fund, 36 was expended in the water wastewater fund, 4% was expended in our stormwater drainage fund, 3% was expended in our debt service fund, and our TIF fund, and our landfill fund. We've expended 51% of our total budget expenditures through April, which is 7.7 million less than anticipated. That's due to personnel, contractual, and a large part of it is capital outlay. We've spent 4.3 million less on expenditures through April than last fiscal year to date, and that's due to capital outlay, as we're winding down some of the projects. And CETA has received an overall 61% of their budget of revenue through April, which is 19,000 less than last fiscal year to date due to interest income, and 16,000 more than anticipated due to our taxes. CETA has spent an overall 37% of budgeted expenditures, expenditures through April, which is 56,000 more than last fiscal year to date due to personnel and capital outlay, and 248,000 less than anticipated due to contractual, capital outlay, and grant disbursements.
All right. Jason, ask you for some feedback. How much was the surplus funds the state had this year? How many billions? 28 billion, I think?
I believe I tried.
And they had 27 billion unspent from the previous session. I'm going to read a requesting that all the mayors of smaller towns asked for a constitutional amendment, that some of that money be refunded to the cities, into the general fund. That'd be around $50 billion potentially. There's a constitutional amendment now that caps the, what they, what we've heard before, the rainy day fund. And it was, I think it currently is, it's a certain
And it was, I think it currently is, it's a certain percentage of the total revenue or total budget. And I think this year was right at twenty-eight billion. Jason's frantic, looking it up. But I'll be pushing the small city mayors to ask for a constitutional amendment to mandate they spend some of, get, rebate some of that money back to the cities.
Good call, Mayor.
Okay. Any questions for Monica?
Good call.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item is Mr. Sanford.
How long are you going to let him sit?
He's got three minutes, put the clock...
Nope, I have. I'm taking every minute of everybody else's that didn't use theirs, so I've got...
I did bring my hat, didn't I?
You did bring your hat. You look good in it too, I'm not going to lie, you look pretty good in it. Uh, mayor joined us in Vegas, which was super cool. You all need to get some boots and a hat. Um, I think that'd be really, really cool. This date in, uh, eighteen fifty-one, the first baseball uniform was worn by the New York Knickerbockers. It was a straw hat, speaking of which, that's why I said it, uh, with white shirts and blue long trousers. In eighteen sixty-one, the first Civil War battle, land battle, it was in modern-day West Virginia. Uh, the last one was here today, kidding. Uh, nineteen twenty-five, the first advertising airship for Goodyear, kind of like an early blimp, that was the first to fly, it was the first to use helium, that was in nineteen twenty-five. Uh, nineteen forty-six, the first bikini was displayed. We saw some in, uh, in Vegas. Uh, and actually, I looked at it twice and I don't think that it was actually today, but it will, uh, yeah, but I'm, you'll be talking about bikinis tonight, so that'll be nice. Uh, can't wait to see, hear that. Aretha Franklin's "Respect," y'all remember that one? That reached number one on this date in nineteen sixty-seven. The last episode of Star Trek was on this day in nineteen sixty-nine.
A sad day.
It was a sad day. Fifty-six, I know, fifty-six years ago.
I was a turkey.
You were turkey, really?
Absolutely.
Star Trek or Star Wars? Anybody have a, you have Star Trek better? Yeah, there you go. Live long and prosper, my friend. Um, uh, Bohemian Rhapsody, that was, uh, that went gold on this day in nineteen seventy-six. And College World Series, we talked a little bit about the softball World Series earlier, but the College World Series first got, uh, got, uh, began televising on this day in nineteen eighty by ESPN. Now, a couple of things, we were in Vegas and so lots of fun entertainment and other things, that's not why we were there, we were there to work and work hard and we appreciate the mayor for going with us. Uh, we worked hard at trying to get more things to recruit to our community. But I'm going to take a little sidestep here for a second. Some of y'all may know and some of you may not know that about twenty years ago, I was in improv. We did, uh, some training, about four years, what turned into be a, a, a simple eight-week deal turned into something that kind of caught fire and, uh, we, we did it for another session and we got promoted into level two, then we got promoted into level three, promoted into level four. We were the first group, my troop was, to actually graduate from this out of the four-day weekend group over in Fort Worth, some of y'all may have been there. We were the first group to, to graduate as an, as an educational improv group and we were given Thursdays as a night to perform. That was kind of a cool thing. We did that for a little bit. After four years, got a little tired of going over there every time and so we decided to start making movies, made about eight little short movies to do. But one of the things about, that's another story, we'll do another time, but one of the things about improv is there's a lot of lessons that you learn in improv. And one of the things that we learn in improv is this theory that you've probably heard of, it's called yes and. Y'all heard about that? Where you, in, in, what it is, is basically the theory of, if the mayor, for example, asked me, Jeff, would you like to go out to eat after the council meeting? If I say no, conversation's over. We don't really get to move forward at all. Or if I say no and then go into a whole different direction, it could change the whole com- uh, complexity of the conversation. However, if he says the same thing, asks me the same question, I say, yes, and why don't we invite a couple of our other council members or staff members? Then all of a sudden, we start building and we start stacking some information. Then he says, yeah, not a bad idea, let's bring some of that data you were talking about and let's talk about that and see if we can do this, this and that. We start building. Kind of like what we do at the dinner table every night. Improv is not just comedy, improv is about building on stories that create this journey towards a conclusion. And that's a lot like what economic development is. We build on each other. For example, I use this as an example or as an analogy because in many cases, we'll do something where we'll say, hey, we want a grocery store. Grocery store needs housing, they need rooftops. We say no to housing and rooftops, we don't get to move forward on a grocery store. If we say no on other things, we might want some, uh, some big restaurants, they might need retail in traffic areas to go up higher. But if we change our traffic or say no on that, or say no on infrastructure, say no on some other things, we can't get that traffic to come in and therefore, we can't get the restaurants we need. We have to build, continue to build on each other. So whenever we say something like we're getting an Amazon plant, people get mad because we didn't get a Texas Roadhouse. It's not mutually exclusive of each other. It's one of those things, and I'm talking more to our citizens who are watching and listening, but it's more about doing those all in conjunction. We've been able to get our retail trade area to grow fifty-three percent in the last seven years. That's pretty significant. It started pretty low. We have to continue to build that. If we get a retail trade area, then the burden off of all of our shoulders gets lifted and we can spread those over to our tourists and our other people that are coming into town. Instead of twenty-two thousand, now we can use nearly a hundred and thirty thousand people as our benchmark for some of these restaurants, retail outlets, grocery stores, hospitality areas and so forth, and they start checking off a box. Another one might be household income. If we go out and get a manufacturer that pays really high wages, then that's going to help us get more disposable income, which then we can check off box number two and that allows us to get higher-end restaurants or higher-end other things to come into town. It's a stack, like we said before. Yes, and we need to get this, so we keep going, we keep saying yes. And I can give many more examples about that. Our household income has gone up sixty-eight percent in the last seven years and so, excuse me, it's important for us to continue to grow those things. So we're going to continue to grow as we move forward and you guys are moving forward into this budget cycle. We're going to continue to look at ways that we can get more manufacturing and industrial things. We're going to continue to look at how we can get more retail and, and, and shops and so forth to come into our town, big box and little box. We're going to continue to look at restaurants and those things and hospitality and every other industry that we possibly can. We also need housing and that's not a secret, not trying to throw any stones, but we got to do all of these things together to build and stack one on top of the other so we can continue to get the kinds of things that everybody wants in Steenville, Texas to make it the best town we can. So that's enough of that one. I wanted to say two other things, I'll get off the, off the dice here. Uh, one thing is that, uh, it's spring and a lot of, we've had a lot of great rain. Supposed to get some tonight supposedly, I don't know if it's going to come, but there's a lot of flowers blooming, a lot of things that are growing. And I'd like to encourage our citizens that if they have a chance to go out and mow their yard, to go out and put their, you know, the flowers out, to do the things that so many already are doing, continue to think about how important it is. There's a theory that we use that everything shows, everything. And to be attractive, or to attract things, you have to be attractive, much like we all did whenever we were courting our spouses. Do we remember that? What'd we do? If we had hair, we combed our hair, right? And don't, I'm not throwing stones, but we did that. We put on sweet smellings and we, we dressed nice and we did all those things to court our loved one. And some, for some of us, it worked and that was awesome, but we had to do what we had to do. It's the same thing whenever we have developers in. We have developers almost every day this week coming into our town and we have them for the next several weeks, at least once a week, to come into our town and look at it. So it's a lot about being attractive so that we can attract. So I want to encourage everybody, not just those that are here in front of me, but all those behind me and all those listening online. If you have an opportunity to clean up, to sweep up, to blow off the leaves, to do, to mow your yard, to put the flowers out, to make your house a little bit tidier, it shows, everything shows every single time people come into our community. We take it for granted, but a lot of people don't because it's their only, potentially only time to see what we look like as a community. So let's keep, keep doing that. Lastly, uh, we mentioned before that we are advertising a little bit, uh, we, in the, the Texas Rangers, uh, they have a baseball team, I don't know if anybody knew, this is not the Texas Rangers of the, uh, the law enforcement. Oh, it's not one of the twenty-eight-hundred, uh, law enforcement. Although if they beat up on somebody, then that could be a crime. But anyway, uh, they have a yearbook, pardon me?
We're somebody that's been in fourth place.
Yeah, I know, I know, but that's okay because people are still going.
We're only three games, four games behind the Astros, so...
Yeah, well, they're not very good either.
I'm a Dodger, hey, I'm a Dodgers fan, I couldn't care less.
Boo, moved to California.
Uh, no, but, uh, a couple of things, so we decided that we were going to...
I thought you were the Banana League guy.
Well, yeah, I'm a Savannah Banana guy, actually, that guy's a good friend of mine, uh, that owns that, so we'll, uh, I could have had ownership in that, I don't know why I turned that down, but anyway.
I think you did it very smart.
Yeah. So one thing about the, the Rangers, which is so cool and being neighbors to us, their average attendance is thirty-three thousand for each of their ballgame, home ballgames. Twenty percent of their, uh, attendees purchase this little, uh, publication, their yearbook. Uh, that's eighty-one home games, there are sixty-six hundred fans a game will buy that, that's over five-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand people that will walk away with this one. And Steenville has, uh, full-page ad in there that we are promoting and getting some things on. So just wanted to make you aware of that, that we're reaching out to different people and it's an opportunity for us to reach folks that we might not be able to reach.
Great.
But again, as they come into town, we've got to look good, right? We've got to look good, we've got to present well. And I know that we will, I know that we have, and I know that we've got an opportunity to continue to grow and do the things that make our town the best town on the planet. So that's it.
Any questions for Jeff? I was going to make a comment, it's nearly impossible to keep up with that lady with the eight-inch spiked heels, Ashley?
No, I thought you were talking about mine.
No, no, no.
Mine was six.
You're just six inches.
Mine was six.
We walked over a million square feet and just to give you an idea, it's interesting, one afternoon, I was walking, Jeff and Ashley and I were together, walking up and all of a sudden, I, we had no NDA with this guy, he walked up and said, grabbed my badge, he said, oh, you're the mayor of Steenville. I said, yes, sir. He said, I, I represent Popeye, we will be building in Steenville. And so that's, that's example of some of the ways to recruit.
And we signed an NDA, you can't talk about that.
I didn't sign it. He walked off, I know we didn't.
Popeye's going to come.
He said, we're going to be in Steenville, Texas. So that's an example of that, that event. Uh, also, one of the things that we met with one Vic Lards developer, who said, there's some things that are likely to come to town that will change the dynamic of where retail is in Steenville, Texas. Some major potential changes.
Good.
And so there's, I appreciate all that y'all did, I learned a bunch every time and I love Jersey Mike's.
Yeah, me too.
That, that's lunch.
I like Jersey Mike's too.
Okay, with that in mind, thank you, Jeff. Uh, consent agenda, I've been told two different things, I've been told twenty-three and twenty-four and then I've been told twenty-two and twenty-three.
Twenty-two and twenty-three.
Twenty-two and twenty-three have been pulled for the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make that motion, we approve the consent agenda.
So I got...
With those two pulled right now?
With those with twenty-two and twenty-three removed.
Gerald, was that you seconded it? Juan, okay.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Comments by city manager?
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council, this Thursday, Mula Fest starts down at the city park and that'll run through Saturday evening. I think Carnival may be there on Sunday as well, so invite everybody down, we'll have some good music, uh, and some good...
Who's performing?
A whole bunch of people. Uh, if you'll go on our Facebook pages, you'll see the whole lineup, it's too many, uh, to mention over the weekend.
There are two, the really big one's Friday. Go ahead, I'm sorry, do me a round.
Uh, we have a budget workshop, uh, with you this Thursday, the fifth, and another one on Tuesday, the twenty-fourth. And then council committee meetings will be Tuesday, June seventeenth, and city offices will be closed on Thursday, June nineteenth in observance of the Juneteenth holiday. And that's all I have.
Gerald, comment? Well, in addition to that, I, I think this is weekend for Cars on the Square and, uh, flea market, Farmers Market, uh, down here, Farmers and Artisans Market, excuse me, uh, down there. So there's going to be a lot of activity going on this weekend here and, uh, and with Mula Fest and, and everything, uh, that's going on, so, uh, really pluses there. Uh, personal thank you to our, our, uh, guys in blue, uh, the, uh, our police department and, and thank you, Jason, too, a little incident that happened to, uh, at our place after, when we were gone. And they were all Johnny on the spot and, and there and, and, uh, in my opinion, saved the day, so thank you very much. And, so, uh, that's all I have.
Oh. Yes, sir, Mayor. So, uh, city manager, I do appreciate all the help you've given Gordon, but the thing I really appreciate is Steenville High School. You know, when people are under a lot of adversity, like those children were over there, students were over at Gordon, and they see their athletic facilities, which I've been a part of, I know all the coaches over there being in athletics most of my life. When you're under the stress that they are under, there has to be something positive that happens out of it, and athletics is one of them. And they were playing in the baseball playoffs and they had no field to play on. And Steenville High School, their administration, athletic administration opened their fields up. And those, those, those student athletes, those students came over here, those players came over here and they had a smile on their face. A smile on their face with a difficult time. And I just think it's, it's wonderful that, that, that our city is always there to rescue people when they need rescuing. And, uh, because they got in the playoffs and I think they, they won the playoffs, last time I know, they just won the semifinals in the state. Um, I just appreciate that we put a smile on a very tough time for those players that have an opportunity to come over here and, and something positive happened for them, so. Thank you for Steenville, Steenville High School for opening up those opportunities.
Thank you. Hey?
Um, I want to congratulate all the recent grads. We missed this in May, it totally slipped our mind, but congratulations to all the high school and university grads that happened in May. Um, Splashville's opening day is June tenth. We are open Tuesday through Saturday from twelve to six P.M., closed on Sunday and Monday. And then the Fourth of July Parade registration is online only this year and we're not accepting any walk-up registrations. So if you want to participate in the seven-mile-long parade, get online, it's on our Facebook